I'm going to ask the clerk if she can just call the roll.
Arcanti.
Here.
Curran.
Here.
D'Amici.
Here.
Riley. Seaberry.
Here.
Stanley.
Here.
Taylor. Cola.
Here.
Negashet.
Here.
Alice.
Here.
Cabo.
Present.
Sadi. Visconti.
Here.
Trombetta. Knapp.
Here.
Nero. Perkins.
Present.
Chianese.
Here.
Rotello.
Here.
Tysholz.
Present.
Tumino.
Let the record reflect that there are fifteen members present, six are optioned. I know that Mr. Sadi is working late tonight in Hartford and I know that Mr. Tumino is out of town on business. I haven't heard from him, so I really can't say. Legal notice. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Danbury will hold public hearings at which parties in interest and citizens will have an opportunity to be heard in relation to the following: copies of which are on file in clerk's office for public inspection. Number one has been withdrawn, so if everyone would just mark their agenda minute that number one has been withdrawn. Number two, amendments to traffic code, chapter nineteen. Number three, amendments to health and union services fees, code of ordinance, section nine dash eight and section eleven dash seven. Number four, shopping carts, code of ordinance, section twelve dash thirty-three. Said public hearings will be held on Monday, the twenty-second day of March two thousand and ten, at seven P.M. in the city council chambers in City Hall, one fifty-five year Hill Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut, oh six eight one oh. It was tested by Jeanie Tally, City Clerk, in this instance. And just so all members are aware, we will be taking up to these items after the public hearing closes on the City Hall. We just want to remind everybody that during the public hearing section of our meeting tonight, we, the council, are here to listen to your concerns on the items that are listed on the agenda. We don't answer questions. We will take those questions up if you ask them during the meeting at the hall and try to give answers for you. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council on item number two, amendments to traffic code, chapter nineteen? Sir, could you please step forward? Step forward, would you please, sign in and... I'm sorry? Yes, sir, this is for chapter nineteen, amendments to traffic code. If you'd just state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Robert R. Greeter. I live at twenty-eight Crescent Road, Danbury. And I just want to say thank you to Councilman Chianese and Councilman Rotello for finally bringing this problem to fruition. We've been battling a long time on Crescent Drive with the parking problems for people who live here. And Councilman Seaver is aware of some of these issues, being the victim of some of himself. I'll just, I'll state my gratitude that somebody's done something finally. And Crescent Drive's been a nice little street, want to make it safe for the kids that play there. And I hope this is just the beginning of things that we can do to keep it going. But Danbury would much nicer place to live.
Thank you. Chair, any other member? Sir?
Hi, my name is Randy Lipscomb. I live at fifty-two Park Avenue in Danbury on the corner of Crescent Drive. My main concern is also on Crescent Drive. They put up a sign not up through the street on Crescent Drive. However, that didn't deter anybody. People are constantly going through, not only filling the pool but speeding through. I just wanted you all to be aware of that fact, you know? And kids, I mean, you think of what you, you know, back there with people, you know, feel more safe, but it's not doing anything, you know? I just wanted you all to be aware of it. I know the issue is not Park Avenue speeding tonight, but that's another issue altogether.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item number two, amendments to traffic code? Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item two, amendments to traffic code? Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item number two, amendments to traffic code? Seeing none, we'll move to item three, amendments to health and union services fees, code of ordinance, section nine dash eight and eleven dash seven. Any member of the public wishing to address the council on item number three? Any member of the public wishing to address the council on item number three? Any member of the public wishing to address the council on item number three? Seeing none, we'll move to item number four, shopping carts, code of ordinance, section twelve dash thirty-three. Any member of the public wishing to address the council on item number four? Is there any member, Mr. Uris? To Libby, right, Mr. Uris? Mark? To Libby, right?
I'm Mr. Joel Uris, who resides at forty-four Olympic Drive in Danbury, regarding the shopping cart ordinance. I just want to say I don't think this ordinance as proposed goes near the car enough. While we're out there punishing victims of crime, we should think about things like bicycles being stolen out of truck yards, those have to be picked up. We should think about, all cars are stolen every year. I mean, we probably ought to make that a really big fine because it makes a tow truck bring one of those in. It may sound a little ridiculous, but that's to me is how this bill sounds. I mean, let's not forget the very first tenant of government, do no harm. Finding victims in crime is just not right. It's not their responsibility to prevent that crime. It's just, it's untenable to think that we're going to find people who get victims. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uris. Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item number four? Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item number four? Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item number four? Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rotell?
Point of order, I received late this afternoon a couple of emails about an item on the agenda. I'm wondering if I should talk about them during the committee in the hall or should I leave them in the record now?
You can talk about them at the committee at the hall, Mr. Rotell.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, I'll take motion, I'll close the public hearings. Section Seaberry, Senator Negashet. And with the clerk, please, go for the record with Mr. Keller, right, at seven oh seven. Okay, at this time, I will look up if any in the hall. And I'll ask the clerk, please, call the roll.
Arcanti.
Present.
Curran.
Here.
D'Amici.
Here.
Riley. Seaberry.
Here.
Stanley.
Here.
Taylor.
Present.
Cola.
Here.
Negashet.
Here.
Alice.
Here.
Cabo.
Here.
Visconti.
Here.
Trombetta. Knapp.
Here.
Nero. Perkins.
Present.
Chianese.
Present.
Rotello.
Here.
Tysholz.
Present.
Tumino.
Let the record reflect that there are seventeen members present and that we have five options. And the record reflecting options is, I noted it on the hearing session. Okay, item number two, amendment to the current code chapter nineteen.
Hello, everybody. Mr. President, item number two, which probably have seen, because it went around to an earlier council, is a combination of basically three items. Item number one is an ordinance, it's a new ordinance in chapter nineteen, which would seek to prevent people from parking their cars within five feet of either side of a driveway in the city. Item number two is a, I'm sorry, the first item is an amendment to existing ordinance, it's an amendment. Item two is a new ordinance that would establish a limit of forty-eight hours for a person to leave a car parked in the same location on a city street. Item number three takes the first two items and incorporates them, still, I'm very loud, and incorporates them into the schedule, the grid that exists in the code ordinance as it right now, and we'll copy that there. You'll see the change in bold or whatever it is. Those two, the amendments, the ordinance and the ordinance, those two items are incorporated into that grid. It'll allow for the police department to fine for that and one of the levels you had established for the other items previously. So, those three things tied together provide the enforcement and the prohibitions that members of the council had asked and others had asked to be enacted by the council. So, I think all the paperwork is there. We haven't answered the questions about the details, but basically it goes straightforward. One's an amendment, one's an ordinance, both incorporated, issued out.
Mr. President? Just a quick question. Previous to the five-foot proposed amendment, what was the distance?
There wasn't, it's not working. There wasn't any distance at all. The amendment to the ordinance is really, it's a new provision as far as the five feet, it does not exist in any way. It incorporates into an existing ordinance on obstruction of traffic. So, the five feet is new, there's no four feet, no eight feet, nothing in there, but it just puts it into an existing ordinance.
Mr. Seaberry? Question for you last, where did this distance come from? I mean, why are we proposing this, five feet from either side of the driveway?
There's no science to it. I mean, in discussing this with some of my clients here, the idea was that this would be an ad with setback for turning. I understand that there's other municipalities that have a similar distance from either side of the driveway. Five feet seemed to be reasonable, could be four, could be six, because five feet seemed to be not too much, not too little. Obviously, that could be enlarged or reduced, but that seemed to be the fair distance in order for people to come in, turning in or turning, going into the driveway.
Mr. Hold on. Does any consideration given to the width of the driveway? On the narrow driveway, five feet would be a wide driveway, you don't need the five feet. Is it officer's discretion or is he acting on a complaint? Or is he...
Probably both. The five feet implies regardless of the width of the driveway, it's a turning radius more than anything else, so there's no, there's nothing in the proposed ordinance that has any designation of the width of the driveway. There are certain standards for new driveways, but there's no designation in this ordinance for a ten-foot drive or eight-foot or anything else. It just has the five feet on either side wherever the driveway ends.
Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good chair, Corporation Council. If this is passed, and a neighbor has a problem with a car that seems to be blocking the driveway or whatever, who are they going to call? No point intended.
They'll call the police.
So, we're going to dispatch a police officer. Is he going to have a tape measure to bring, have to bring this over?
Fair question. I assume that they'll have some way to measure. If the council enacts this, they'll have to figure out some way to measure for violation, some way to find out if there's a violation or not. That would require some sort of mechanism to us.
Thank you. Mr. Rotell?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. One of the issues in the sixth, and it's probably an issue that the other wards and the outlarge people certainly have experienced with, is that the downtown neighborhoods have very small lots. Some of the houses on, let's say, Jefferson Avenue, Pleasant Street, Harding Place, some of the president's streets basically have fifty-foot to seventy-five-foot wide lots and the houses were originally built for literally cork horses and carriages. Some of you, when you were kids, might even remember the original hitching post, the lime hitching, limestone hitching posts in front of these houses. They're never really designed for cars and they've sort of been retrofitted over the last, probably since World War Two, for motor vehicles with garages and things like that. So, you're dealing with essentially very narrow driveways, less than the width of, in many cases, parking space. And what happens, if you have one of us take a little field trip, we go up, say, Jefferson Avenue, you'll see that cars are parked right up to the edge of the driveway. What happens in the situation like that, since it's a narrow driveway, is when you pull out, you can't arc your turn to the left or right. You have to go straight past the bumpers of the car into the next lane and then turn left or right depending on which direction you're going. If it's your son's car, you're going to yell at your son. But if it's somebody parking their car from a condominium complex that has a limit on cars, it's usually two, and then every other car after that is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year, they get creative in where they put their vehicles and very often they put their vehicles near these condominium complexes. And the sixth, in many of that, for downtown, many of these condominium complexes are built adjacent to or within these older neighborhoods with very narrow driveways and very narrow yards, a close setback. So, you really don't have a lot of area to put a couple of cars in front of your house. Now, I also represent, Jolly Uris is a section of town where people have much broader laws and much wider driveways and for the most part, those people live and can park in the street. This would not be an issue for people who live one, two, and four acre zoning, wide driveways and big backyards, they can park their car. But it's a critical problem in areas like Crescent Drive, you heard some of the people talking about, West Wister Street, and I'm sure in some of the wards like the third, perhaps in Hospital Avenue, places like that. So, the idea is to just cull these guys back a little bit from the driveway so that if someone were to park a car and abandon it, so to speak, some of these cars can be parked there indefinitely now, people will have some recourse. If I had an issue with one of my properties where we actually couldn't get anybody to move the car, it was, it was a legally registered car, it was right on the end of the driveway and tenants could not get out onto the street. They had to drive straight out in the oncoming traffic before they could make their turn and obviously in the reverse when they were coming back in. Problem number one is that. Problem number two, no ambulance could fit. They simply, with cars parked on each edge of the driveway, the ambulances could not come into the complex. That's how narrow some of these older driveways are. And then problem number three, with some of these vehicles that have been parked there for a long time, the streets can't move. So, I think that from what I've been hearing from constituents who are reading about this in paper, is that this ordinance, if it passes, would, after a complaint, I mean, you're not going to, you know, call the police because somebody just parks a car there and if you go away for the weekend, but after you realize a car is not moving after a week or ten days, you're going to say, hey, what's going on? I can't live like this. Make the call to the police, they come, they either metro from the driveway or set the timer for forty-eight hours, tag the car, and then come back and move it. At that point, it's been effectively abandoned or narrowed. You know, again, I don't know where anybody lives here, but if you live downtown, this is a problem that you deal with, I mean, believe me, a regular basis. It makes getting in and out of your driveway not only dangerous but very difficult and it's tougher emergency. Forget about fire trucks even, inside ambulances and even plumbers with trucks and everything. So, it makes it tough. And up until now, we haven't been able to do anything. If the car's registered in Danbury and it's, you can park on the street there, then it doesn't make any difference, no matter how inconvenient you're, you know, being to your neighbor, there's nothing that they could do. This at least gives them, after a complaint, a little bit of enforcement. I'm going to vote for this. My constituents have been telling me that they needed the money, so I'm going to vote for it. I think we should do it. Also, let me just add that if this becomes a problem, then we could adjust. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Mrs. Shannon? I don't think we have to hand up till late this person, I have a reason, Mrs. Shannon. I'll go to you next.
Thank you. First, I'd like to start off by saying that when we go to vote for or against this change in the ordinance, it's, it hasn't been done together? It can't be split? Okay, because the reason why I'm saying that is, and this is just my opinion, and I just wanted to express my feelings towards it. I can understand in certain neighborhoods when there's not a lot of parking and the safety issue that may arise with cars being parked close to the driveways when people are pulling out, there's no sight and it is dangerous and even for, you know, for children or whatever. But I do not agree with the parking one and forty-eight hours. I have the luxury of being able to go home on a Friday night and parking my car in the garage and sometimes my car doesn't move until Monday morning. Or when I had, when I was a stay-at-home mom and I had four children at home, my car may not move all week, but it's not abandoned. And I thought at the uptop meeting, one of the main concerns in enacting this forty-eight hours was for cars that were abandoned. And I think that, I think that we can determine an abandoned car by being neighborly and I don't know if the unit would knock on the door of the person who owns the home, checking to see if it's registered, asking them if they could start the car or finding out if it's, if it is an abandoned car or not. But if the car's registered and it doesn't say that you cannot park there, I cannot see putting a time limit, a forty-eight hour time limit, seems too short of a time and I think it's ridiculous. But I do, I can support the five feet on either side of the driveway as a safety issue. I, you know, people came out tonight, I appreciate you're supporting your city and letting us know what your problems are in your neighborhoods, but with the forty-eight hours, I just, I just don't, I don't see that happening. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, let's, let's suppose someone has a big driveway and I'll use myself as an example. My driveway's about thirty-five feet wide. Now, what happens if somebody parks in front of my driveway at my house?
In front of the driveway?
In front of the driveway and they're visiting me.
Blocks you in, would you say?
No, not block, no, not block, they're visiting me. The car's taken in because it's in front of the driveway?
It violates the proposed ordinance and if the vehicle's closer than five feet to your driveway, it's, if it's a city road.
Mr. Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I'd like to speak in favor of the forty-eight hour time limit. I did receive a couple of calls from constituents in the fifth ward. A woman on Ninth Avenue actually called and said that a lot of cars are parked there for extended periods of time. They don't have a lot of parking there to begin with and then if you add the additional cars on top of that, there's nowhere for guests and other people to come over and visit on a short-term basis. So, I think that having some kind of timeframe would be a good thing, especially in those tightly settled areas. I also got a couple complaints from Rogers Park area, cars parking all day long, day and night. And this would actually fall into that charity glory to, you know, prevent something like that from occurring also. Forty-eight hours, I mean, the police officer still needs to get the call, show up, ticket the vehicle, return before a fine is issued. I do believe, let me clarify it with Corporation Council, the chair.
The time limit, Duane, with respect to the, the forty-eight hours would probably commence at the time the complaint is made. There's no other way to really do it.
So, the officer comes out, clock starts at the phone call, puts a, does he tag the car and return for a fine? How would the whole process run out?
I could have the chief speak to it also, but I believe that the police officer would come out and through some means, begin the timing of the forty-eight hours. And again, the, the police would have to figure out a way to encompass that time, timeframe. So, they'd probably use a mark on their records of some, in some way, that this is the, that within a certain period of time, forty hours from the call, let's say, they would return and then ticket the car at that time when, when forty hours is expired.
We need to verify that with the chief on it. That's good.
Chief Baker? President, this is your president.
I'm here.
Do you have a ticket book in your back pocket?
Pardon?
Do you have a ticket book in your back pocket?
I don't, but we have a bright red sticker, we call it red ball. And they go out and chalk the tires for my car some way, they place that red sticker on the car note of any owner that it's been chalked and the clock is running, they'd return in forty-eight hours. We do that now with abandoned cars and a lot of times, we'll find out it's properly registered and completely serviceable, not a lot we can do about it because there's no other ordinance that they cover.
Actually, just to close, and that's the first thing, I actually put a call in myself for a car that was, was called in to me that had been parked there excessively. And one of the first things that the officer explained to me was that if it's a legally registered vehicle, they can't do anything, which is why I think this is a good idea. So, I'll be, I'll be supportive of this, or not what this, but...
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Sorry that I missed him after Mrs. Stanley. Mr. Chianese?
I just want to do, through the chair, I just want to follow up Chief Baker.
And could you use your microphone?
I just want to follow up with Chief Baker. How do you, can you just give the procedures? How do you determine whether a car has been abandoned or not? That's the reason why I bring that up is, the example I'm going to use is actually did happen on Crescent Drive. I think the story was, was told to me that there was a car parked in the street for over three weeks. And after several phone calls was made, it was given back that there was nothing that the police could do because it was legally registered. And it wasn't to the car was damaged. I think they broke the mirror, they broke some of the windows. It was only at that point where the police actually had the authority to actually tow that vehicle away. So, can you just give us an example? How would you, before you go to that extreme of damaging the actual car, how would you tell if a car had been abandoned or not?
There's no uniform way to do that, but the indicators of an abandoned car would be the registration is expired, if there is no registration, damage to the car, the car's unserviceable, flat tire, it doesn't start, those types of things would indicate to us the car's abandoned. But if the car's in good repair, properly registered, legally parked, then we're absolutely correct, we probably couldn't be doing anything about it, parked there all year.
In your opinion, do you think this ordinance would be a good tool for the police department to have? Within forty-eight hours is a significant amount, or do you think it should be seventy-two hours or a little longer?
I really have no opinion on the length of that time. I think you ought to establish some time so we have something to work with, but I mean, you know, seventy-two, a hundred and sixty-eight, I don't care. Give us a parameter to work with.
But the ordinance itself is something that you could, it's a good tool for the half.
Yes.
Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Chief. Let me, to Chief Baker, just a question.
Let me, to Chief Baker, just a question. When you put the red ball on, right now, regardless of what this ordinance says, is there a time limit before something is done, or is there a thirty-day time limit on it, or what?
No, but they'll come back in a reasonable amount of time to check to see if the vehicle's moved. And they'll do some of the things that we talked about earlier, they'll run a registration, try and contact, contact registered owner, knock on the door, see if the neighbors know about it. They do all that as part of that investigation right now.
So, in your opinion, then, forty-eight hours fits into the timeframe of, of actually doing what you're doing now with the red ball?
Yes.
Is your department equipped to handle something like this, after its implement, if it is?
On complaint, we'll be able to handle it, but I mean, it's not something we're gonna be out, you know, looking for violations. But that's all we hand in abandoned vehicles now, is on complaint.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Wisconsin? Mr. Taylor and Mrs. Stanley?
My concern would be, I'm lucky enough also to have Wall Street parking, to have a garage. What would be the situation of someone who did not have that ability to park off the street, and they happened to go on a two-week vacation? And they had a neighbor who was unfriendly, and they called the police, say this car is, had been parked here for, you know, three or four or five days, and the police department can't contact the owner and say it was me, I came home from vacation and my car's been towed simply because I was on vacation. I agree, we need a time limit. I think forty-eight hours is too short of a time. Thank you.
And, yeah, Mrs. Stanley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to reiterate what I said before. Obviously, after listening to everybody up here, we consider a car abandoned after it's left longer than forty-eight hours. I don't believe that that makes any sense to me, just like, um, my. Mr. Councilman Taylor had suggested that people do go away on vacation, and I think that we're gonna drive our police department absolutely crazy. Many people leave for an hour to go shopping and come back, and, and it just, and, and park in the same spot, because people that live in small areas almost claim their spot. And we all know that, you know? When they live in, in an area, it's almost like a chart city. They have, they have their spots, and they might argue over it, because that's where they park their car, in front of their house. So, I just think that a car that's parked, I don't care how long it's parked, people start to claim their spots because they live there. And you cannot say that just because it's parked there longer than forty-eight hours, it's abandoned. I think there's other ways of determining whether a car's abandoned or not. Thank you.
Mr. Arcony?
Thank you, yeah, President, Mr. President. I think this is gonna open up a huge can of warrants for our police department. You get a vindictive neighbor, they can call on your car every day. Or, or how is, how is the police department really gonna determine this? And I understand that there's certain areas of town where there's limited parking, and we have remedies for that already. Those are, we could put signs up, we have signs around town that say one-hour parking. We could, we could expand on that, the chief of police is the partner, he's the traffic authority. If he wanted to put down twelve-hour parking signs up, in that case, that's pretty easy for us to enforce. But what would Scott mean? Mr. President, just following up about your, your red pickup truck parked on the street saying that thing's been parked there for three days. How is the police department really gonna determine that that car's been parked there that long? I think we'd open up a huge can of warrants, and we could have elderly people who, who made either cars, and properly, legally registered, properly parked cars on the street. So now where do they have to move the thing? I mean, that's just ridiculous. And it could very well be that cars, as Councilwoman Stanley said, these cars can be placed back into their, into their spot, and other neighbors may believe that those cars have not moved in quite some time. I think it's a huge problem for the police department. I will not support the forty-eight hour rule. And you mentioned about an amendment to this, to this ordinance?
Well, if something was split, split. We could, we could, for the part of the city, make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We could certainly make a motion with a change in it from what's proposed.
Oh, thank you.
And then we would send that to the council, and we refer it back to public hearing, and we'd do this again in a future meeting, and we'd all get.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And just for the record, Mr. Seaberry drives a pickup truck that's same color. He's a car industry. I don't know. He's a.
Mr. Seaberry?
Thank you, Mr. President. And by the way, my truck is even taller. You know, I have to address this, I've known Bob Creer for thirty-five years, and he's lived in Crescent Drive for at least that. And I know exactly what he's talking about, and Randy as well, but people from Lindraut Apartments, or condos, whatever they're called, they're overcrowded over there, and they don't offer a significant amount of parking spaces, so they just filter out onto Park Avenue and then come into Crescent Drive. Bob and Randy live right at the end there, closest to Park Avenue School, and those cars are basically, they could be parked right in front of Bob's driveway, and when he comes home from work, he can't even park there. We've had the issue there, when I owned a piece of property over there, they were coming down. There was one morning I went over there to do some work at the house, and there was a car parked in my driveway. And I didn't do a thing to it. I called the police and they were able to take care of it. But then I look at the other, and I'm, and I'm very sympathetic to them. I lived through it with them, and, and, but then I look at the other side, finally listening to Councilman Arcony, and then thinking about properties on Griffin Avenue, where one side of the street, there's no parking, and the other side of the street, there's parking all up and down. And on many of those houses, there are no driveways. And so what's happening is that people are parked there, and we, just like Connie said, she'd come home on a Friday night and leave her car there for Monday morning. They are now subject to fines if they didn't use their car. It's a, it's a double-edged sword here that I'm faced with, and I, quite frankly, don't know if I can support the forty-eight, not because of them, I'd love to do anything I can for Crescent Drive. Maybe there are more signs that can go up to no parking, and we tried that before as far as parking signs, we had people put, the police put parking signs there, no parking signs there. But people just abandon it, and then, you know, you can call the police station, the chief will send out people to, to ticket the cars, but they're back next week. So it's, it's a tough call on my part here.
And this will be my final. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to do this, but I would like to split the, split the question. Can I, do I have to make that a motion?
Well, you decide, when I call for a motion, is if you wanna make the motion, I certainly don't want to make a motion for you.
Just one, I just wanna know when I do that? After the motion, or before?
You can make the motion to state that.
I would like to make a motion at this point, to split the, well, for each ordinance.
You wanna accept the ordinance change, or the ordinance amendment to support the five-foot rule, but you don't wanna support the forty-eight hour?
Well, I want, I want my fellow councilpeople to go on that issue separately.
Second. Um, you say, you usually just make a motion to accept the five-foot rule and not accept the forty-eight hour?
Well, I don't have a problem with that, but maybe somebody else may not agree with me.
To divide the question, we have to ask for.
I'd like to divide the question.
And then you make a motion after that. So you divide the question, and then somebody can make a motion on that divided item.
I'd like to make a motion to divide the question.
Second, you make a motion, and second, you divide the question. And I think, I'll try your minds on that. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, through the chair to Les, do we need to make a discussion on dividing the question?
No. The, the, the ordinance provides that any member can ask for a division of the question when the sentence admits of it, and based on the discussion that does admit of it. Okay? So if, if any one member can ask for a division of the question where it's appropriate, and then you make a motion on that divided item.
Right, but we've, we've successfully divided the question, because Councilwoman Stanley has just done that, and there's no, you need a second.
No second of discussion.
We've divided it. Now, the next step would be to make motions on, on divided aspects of this. I'd like to make a comment before we go around that one. Mr. Arcony, second option, Councilwoman Stanley, we're already divided. Just to respond to a couple of comments, I think the idea that vindictive neighbors would be abusing a forty-eight hour rule is, I don't wanna call it a straw man, but I think it would be, I'm not, I wouldn't rule out the possibility in a, in a city the size of Danbury, but I think basically, if you're gonna make a habit of making false police reports, at some point, you're gonna have to pay the price. If you say that, you know, Councilman Arcony's truck was parked in front of my house for three days, and they show up, and they red-tag it, and they bump into Councilman Arcony, he says, I just pulled in from the, I was in City Hall, I was on TV. They're gonna know that your car wasn't sitting here for three days, they're gonna know they got a problem today, but they're gonna have a chat with that neighbor. So I, I don't, I don't foresee if we enact the forty-eight hour rule that this is going to lead to a flood of neighbor on neighbor, you know, false reports. And if it does, the police, I'm sure we are, are very skilled at dealing with that one. The other thing is, is that the chief has spoken about this already this evening, is the police force simply doesn't have the inclination or the manpower to clock every single car every single day. They're going to be responding by complaint. So if we can, if we can eliminate the likelihood of false complaints, we're left with legitimate complaints. And I have to tell you, these complaints are extremely legitimate. And we have streets that have not been cleaned, because cars have been sitting there not for a weekend in Boston, but for six weeks in the vineyard, or South America, or wherever they happen to be. I'm gonna throw this off. It's a problem. We need to address the problem. Now, it, it's, it's possible that forty-eight hours may be a little bit too, that suit might be a little bit too tight. We might be able to let it out a little bit to seventy-two hours, but please realize, this, the clock is not gonna start ticking when you pull in to your curb in front of somebody else's house, because you're not gonna call because your car's in front of your house. If you pull into somebody else's house on Friday afternoon in Boston, the clock doesn't start ticking Friday night, the clock starts ticking after a neighbor realizes the car has been there forever. Then they call, then they tag it, then they. So it's been my experience in downtown Danbury that takes about ten days. I start getting false, Councilwoman O'Toole's, but a guy in front of my house has come here for like ten days, probably longer, like two weeks, and I take a look at the car. There's leaves underneath, newspapers, there's stuff you've seen, collect around the tires, cans. So we call the police, they say, Councilman, you notice, we can't do a thing about it, it's vaguely missing. Okay. So at that point, the clock's gonna start ticking, they'll tag it, the owner, the owner's around, or a friend of the owner's around, they'll see this, they'll make a way to move it. And I gotta tell you something else, if I decide to park, which I'm not gonna have Wall Street parking, I make a way because somebody else has Wall Street parking, but if I didn't have Wall Street parking, and I had to park my car on the street, and I was going to go to Italy for six weeks, I would make arrangements with my neighbor, hey, I'm taking off, here's my keys, can you move it, and so on. I mean, I don't, I don't want the street cleaners to have to go on. Can you, can you, you know, make it look like it has to be abandoned, so it doesn't get stolen, so on. And I, I, I don't wanna, you know, I, when I live in Mayfair here, but the thing is, it might even be possible to call your, your police department, tell them it's gone, I mean, look, I'm not, I didn't abandon my car, I'm gonna wait a couple of weeks, I ran most of the city, I gotta take care of it. In, in rare instances like that, I, I think that we can work around this. And, and again, I, we could be flexible, I wouldn't be adverse to an amendment that extends the period from forty-eight hours to say seventy-two, but remember, that clock doesn't start ticking until someone has had it up to here with the fact that that car's been in front of their house for weeks. And at that point, they're ready to take a baseball bat at the car. I'll leave you then.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Wisconsin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just wondering, before we do vote on this, is there any other item on here that, you know, we're gonna have to take apart and add something to it, or just is going to be the only one that, that go down? Just split the vote.
There's a bigger problem connected, it's gonna be only on the five-foot driveway in the forty-eight hour.
Councilwoman Stanley, since you already divided the question on the forty-eight hour, you've also separated out the other item, which is the five-foot lane beside the driveway. So you're voting on that separately as well. Can I, can I just say one thing to Mr. President, that, to Councilwoman Stanley, that, as I understand the request for this ordinance, for the forty-eight hour parking, it was not intended to facilitate removal of abandoned vehicles as much as it was intended to forestall road or traffic or safety hazards on the, on the road. For example, if a car's parked in a place too long, it's a narrow road, you could have a problem with traffic coming and going. That was the concept, rather than, you know, you, you tag the car forty-eight hours and you gradually try to tow it, you know, like, that's not the intention, is to figure out whether it's abandoned or not, that's a separate determination. The forty-eight hours, and people currently, from wrong, is intended to prevent a safety issue where cars are parked on the side of the road for a long time, and it can't get by, and it's a safety hazard. That's, that's the intent.
Can I respond to that? I should be able to respond.
I'll bring you the, the fourth amendment.
I, I understand what you, I understand your language, and I understand that there's a safety issue, but it sounds to me that the areas that we are talking about are congested areas that don't have parking in a driveway or on the streets. So, in making a car move within forty-eight hours, we'll just put another car to park there. Somebody else is gonna take that spot. So we're really not fixing anything. Do you understand what I'm saying? The, the problem is, it's congested. The areas are congested. That may have to do with planning, back whenever they decided to do what they're doing. We have to work on an, there, there is an issue, but just making a car move in forty-eight hours, there's only gonna be another car pulling in. So is Mr. O'Toole gonna, is, is he gonna be happy if it's just a different model car sitting in front of the house? I mean, there's always gonna be a car parked there. There's no parking. The issue is, there's no parking. I think that's one of the issues.
The only, the only items addressing is, is, the policy decision is yours, of course. The only issue it's addressing is what is coming to you. What's coming to you is not really an enlargement of the towing or abandonment of vehicles and all that issue. What's coming to you is, is, is less than that, it's a narrow request, it's simply a traffic issue related to parking. Policy issue is yours, if it's too short, or whatever, we don't like it, and you decide against it, but that, that is why this was crafted, not to allow for additional abandonment of any vehicles, it was just to deal with the safety.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It seems to me if it was a safety issue, that the police would already have a prerogative to move that car, whether, whether it depended on the traffic or, or if it posed a safety issue, I would think the police would, without question, move the vehicle. If that's the intent of the rule, I think that needs to be stayed in the, in the ordinance. That if we're addressing a safety issue is one thing, if we're addressing a parking issue, I think it's a totally different issue. Thank you.
Mr. Matt?
Questioning Mr. Pinter, possibly the chief. Could you clarify a statement that Councilman Arcony had made earlier regarding the authority of the police chief or parking authority to mark certain areas? Because it seems that the argument here is more about the downtown areas than it is the exterior areas of town, obviously the most congested areas. And is there an ability for either a police chief or the parking authority to create, possibly on Crescent Street, a twelve-hour parking, a twenty-four-hour parking, a thirty-six hour parking? What is your authority there, or is that something that really truly has to come through
It should come through you, because, because mostly it's a citywide enactment. If you're going to, not you, but if the city's going to, let's say cherry-pick locations, I think the chief can do that with authority, he has already known the statutes. But here we have a citywide proposal that you decided to do by ordinance, and in that case, where it's citywide, the council has to enact it. The chief can address this also, but I, I've convinced that he's got authority in certain segments of the city based upon specific problems to act.
Oh, Ted, and so if in fact we do, we have split the question, we do deny the forty-eight hour title tonight, move out the five-foot parking, what you're saying is, is that those areas that aren't congested, where there are concerned residents, there are councilpeople obviously fighting on their behalf, that they truly could connect with the police chief if those areas are marked?
I believe the chief has the authority in the event of a, of a jamming, or a safety issue, or a blockage, or some other event like that that's isolated, he has the authority to deal with that. What he wouldn't have authority is to deal with a broad enforcement, you know, that's, that's normally what the city wants.
Mrs. Spiesons, for the first time.
Thank you. Through the chair to Chief Baker. The town I grew up in, well, the city I grew up in, we had alternate side of the street parking, just for those reasons, for street cleaning, for, you know, just protection and make sure there weren't abandoned cars. Has that ever been looked into as an alternative in cer, on certain streets? I realize there are some streets it wouldn't be possible, but would that... I realize there are some streets it wouldn't be possible, but would that be an alternative anywhere?
The town I grew up in also had alternate side parking for snow plowing and for street sweeping. It also kept the abandoned cars off the street, kept the cars moving. I think it's a good idea, but Danbury seems to be pretty conservative when it comes to parking and imposing government regulation for those types of things. So, I guess I would agree with Mr. Pinter in his remarks, that this is a legislative decision, this is not something that, you know, would become a police problem, you know, we're there to implement your will, but you're the ones that have to establish that will or that policy. And just in general speaking, I'm really opposed to putting up a lot of signs, we have enough sign pollution here in Danbury, and so I get a lot of requests to put up signs, but I use that power very sparingly.
Well, thank you, Chief. I guess it's just a statement, I will not be supporting the 48 hours. And I think that maybe it would be a good idea if we do, as a body, look into alternate side of the street parking and work with the chief where that may be appropriate. Thank you.
Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a general comment. These complaints that we're getting from our constituents aren't coming out of thin air, they're real. And it's our responsibility here as council people to try to take some type of corrective action, and that's what we're doing now. I really don't think the 48 hours is too short, but if it was 72, we'd probably make maybe get somebody's similar concern from, from the opposition. But overall, I really think that we need to push some type of legislation forward that we can correct this problem, because it doesn't make sense for people to be able to park their vehicles on the street for as long as they want to, it just doesn't make sense. So, I think that we need to be able to do something to fix that problem.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to turn the panel over to Barry Lewis, who has already had to speak on this issue myself as well. There are a few points that I'd like to bring forward, everybody's been good. I had gotten a call from the first hit the paper about this from a resident on Belmont Circle, who asked me to come up to his house and look at his driveway. And I went up to meet him, and his frontage on his home is streetwear area. He and his wife both own a car, and they have three teenage children, they're all driving age, that they share a car. But one car has to go on the street every night because they only have two spots in their driveway for the resident's car. The problem is, if he parks, if the children park the car forward the neighbor's driveway, the mailman, because he still has a row of mailbox, will not deliver the mail to his house. And if he parks the car that far enough so the mailman can access the mailboxes, he's in violation of the code of ordinance. And I've looked at several of the homes on Belmont, and there was a perfect example of several people that had been fighting for parking in one family's cars on the street, and they were attacked. And he just expressed his concern to me about that, I just wanted to bring that all forward to you to think about. My second point was, I wanted to ask Mr. Tenter about possibly moving this back to Anhok. Because we seem to be all over the place on, you know, where we are on both issues, and it might be a prudent thing to do to send this to Anhok and have it looked at and try to come out with a better consensus for that movement. You have any opinion on that, Mr. Pinter?
If the council decides it is, fine, there would be a recommendation tonight back to the council to recommit this on April 6th, when the next meeting, the city council next meeting, it's fine.
Well, let's just without further ado, if you don't think the motion to add this is accepted by the House, so if anyone feels sorry about it, I'll see you, Barry.
For the fifth time. That stated, I think it would be prudent to send it back to Anhok, and I would like to make a motion to do so.
Second.
It doesn't require a second.
Which I don't know.
On the entire order change?
Yeah, we already split it. So, how do I do this? If I want to?
You're gonna make a motion to recommend the recommitment of the April meeting of the item on section 19 dash 32. You recommend the committee by the April council. That's all.
Okay. And it doesn't require a second?
Yes.
So, you have a motion to refer the first item, which is the 19 dash 32.
31, I'm sorry, 31.
19 dash 31. To Anhok, and then the council's April 6th meeting to refer this back to Anhok. Do you have a second on that? This should be counted as second.
Any discussion? Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Kelly, help me out here, we're sending the 48-hour, proposing to Anhok, not the five-foot, what, what are we doing?
The motion on the floor, we recommend to the April council to recommit the 48-hour legislation, 19 dash 32, back to a committee.
But not the five-foot?
Not the five-foot.
If we pick that one up as a second part of the question?
That one's part two.
But I understand, but correct me if I'm wrong, if we send this to the council, there are essentially going to be two new items at the, at the next one's meeting, is that correct?
Correct. They'll come back, they'll come back as, I don't know how they'll show up on the agenda, but you can, you'll have to divide them again over there. But what you're doing tonight is you're recommending on the divided item regarding the 48 hours, you're recommending a recommitment by the April council.
Yeah, I understand that, but this has not been in front of us before. This has not yet been in front of the council.
The grid, the grid?
Yeah.
It, it was before you in March, and it was referred to this public hearing.
Okay, we did have the grid. Because I know we had the proposed ordinance, but I didn't see the grid. The grid's on.
The grid is here, and the grid will follow.
So, the grid will be the second, April will be the second type of the grid?
Yes.
Because this doesn't count, it's due to the whole grid. Okay. Okay. Are we discussing the motion, or are we?
You're gonna discuss the motion to refer it to Anhok.
Yeah, I would be having support signing the 48-hour proposal. Let me just, let me just add, imagine how your person at Belmont Circle would feel if somebody else's car was parked in front of his house for eight weeks, and the police kept calling him, "We're sorry, Mr. Smith, you can have a park in front of your house as long as this guy's here, we can't trust this guy." Thanks. So, yeah, let's, let's fix this. I mean, you know, if we're, you know, if we need what we say here, let's fix it. We got a problem, we gotta fix it.
Any discussion on the motion to refer this to the council, to refer it back to committee? Seeing none, the party minds, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody understand? Okay. Now to the second part, which is section 19 dash 32 of the code of ordinance to propose five-foot parking in the driveway. What's your opinion on that? Mr. Shearer?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to recommend that the amendment, section 19 dash 32, code of ordinance setting distance limits for parking each side of the driveway. We approved it as a new ordinance, would that be 19 thirty-one?
Second.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
And once it's been made by Mr. Shearer and seconded by Mr. McCutcheon. Under discussion? Seeing none, the party minds, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? You gonna vote it off? Item number three. This is a code of ordinance that's with the drive to help the community service fees, section 19 dash eight and 11 dash seven.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to rephrase myself.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm ready to talk to you, I'm ready to talk. And we are happy as well. Anybody like to jump in for you?
The first time. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to speak with Mr. LeWright. I'm not even sure if we can answer this question, I might need...
I'm sure I'll make a quick answer.
The raising of these fees, is this gonna help you to get a little extra help?
The fees go to the general fund, so...
Thank you.
Anything else wish to have a discussion about item number three? Does any member want to make a motion to call Mr. Teans?
Just a housekeeping, just corporation council, since three council members have accused themselves of this change of quorum, since we only have 13 members.
If you won't change your quorum, it'll change the number for a majority of the present quorum. You have 13 members now, so your quorum will be seven people instead of a different.
Someone you'd like to make a motion, item number three? This is the third half, I'm sorry, I was looking at this one.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to recommend the approval of a resolution establishing new fines pursuant to sections eight, eight dash six of the code of ordinances pertaining to food establishments. Approval of a resolution establishing an $80 fee for issuance of certificates of apartment occupancy pursuant to code of ordinances, sections 10 dash 10, four. An amendment to section 9 dash 8 of the code of ordinance amending fees for subsurface sewage disposal system permits. And adopting a new ordinance, section 11 dash 7, pertaining to regulation and licensing of public scootings.
Seconded by Mr. Teans. Any discussion? Mr. Curran.
Just as a point of inquiry, when was the last time you raised a fee, anybody know?
2003. Seven years ago.
The other, if you want, or you do deal with separate items, you can separate them also, as you did last time, it's okay.
If I'm not mistaken, I think Mr. Matt made the motion and included both.
Right, that's fine, that's, that's, that's a good motion if you want.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pinter. Okay, so you don't have a session, I'll try your minds, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Anybody opposed? Actually, that was a quick... Okay, for item number four. Who would like to first fight in the apple on this? You have a question, Mr. Curran?
I'll take the shot. This is the shot of cards, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. I feel very strongly that supermarkets have a responsibility to take care and maintain where their carts are. And it's not, it should not be the city's responsibility and cost to the city to collect them. Now, there'd be a lot of people who argue otherwise, but I'll tell you what, if we go down to Walgreens right now, Walgreens solved the problem very easily. You try to take one of their carts off their property, and the wheels will not turn. And if the people that own all these supermarkets or have carts, who do the same thing that Walgreens did, we wouldn't have this problem. But right now, we have our city employees going around every day collecting these carts that don't expense the people whose carts they are, other than watching them go to the public works and pick them up. But meantime, all our employees are working hours a day collecting these things, let alone hurting their backs maybe and being out of compensation and everything else. And, and, and people should be responsible for their own carts. They go out shopping on their plane, they have a man out in the parking lot all the time. Now, granted, I don't think anybody's gonna walk away with their cart out of their plane because I don't wear their coat, but they're out there watching their carts, it's a $200 item. But I, I, I believe very strongly in this, and again, if I don't walk these right now, try to walk away with one of their carts, it's gonna happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I concur with Mr. Curran, I'm not familiar with the process that Walgreens uses to that, but I know I have been in different shopping, you know, facilities around the country, and there are certain places, if you want a shopping cart, you have to put a deposit in the, you know, just like an airport, if you want a baggage cart, you put a deposit in the thing to release the shopping cart, and when you take that shopping cart back, you get your money back. I would assume probably a system that Walgreens uses would probably be more workable, but I do concur that it's the, it's the responsibility of the, of the shopping center, of the supermarket, whoever has those carts, to be responsible for them, and that the city does have to continue to pick them up, that if they want to retrieve that cart, they should pay $25 a cart, or whatever, to get those carts back. But we need to be put, how we need to put the responsibility on the backs of the people who own those carts. Thank you.
I guess I'm looking at this, this from a, from a different angle. Here we have an individual or a corporation that puts their trust in danger. So, they move a business here, they pay all the permit fees, they pay real estate taxes, they pay property taxes on those very carts that are being taken. They're paying periodic health department fees, fire department inspection fees, they're paying fees for their weights and measures, and they're employing people. These people are, are helping the quality of life in this city. On the other side of this, we have a thief, someone who takes this cart and willingly takes this cart and walks down the street with it. That's, that is larceny. And I have no mercy at all for larcenies at all. Perhaps it's because of my years as a police officer. I know that if someone stole something from me, the only thing that's gonna make me, if you give me any satisfaction is they serve a long stretch of prison, they give me big rocks and the little rocks, but that's another, that's another story. I personally think there should be zero tolerance for this. I know that if it was my shopping cart, I want the person arrested, I don't care what their situation is, they took the cart from me. We, these, our, our taxpayers are out there, they're, they're working on tight margins, an awful lot of money being spent. I do not, I will not support fining them, or, you know, the property is stolen property, so the city is going to pull for ransom their stolen property? I guess that's the way I'm looking at this. It's just wrong. If you're gonna pick them up, bring them back to, bring them back to the stores and let them conduct their business. I mean, it's very tough to run a business. There's an awful lot of money spent, there's an awful lot of soft money out there, a lot of things people don't see, and I, I'd like for everyone to understand that, and I will not support any more taxes or fines or fees on our, that are unnecessary such as this. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arkani.
if it gives me any satisfaction, is they serve a long stretch of prison, making big rocks and the little rocks, but that's another story. I personally think there should be zero tolerance for this. I know that if it was my shopping cart, I want the person arrested. I don't care what their situation is. They took the cart from me. Our taxpayers are out there, they're working on tight margins, an awful lot of money being spent. I do not, I will not support fining them, or, you know, the property is stolen property. So the city is going to pull for ransom their stolen property? I guess that's the way I'm looking at this. It's just wrong. If you're going to pick them up, bring them back to the stores and let them conduct their business. I mean, it's very tough to run a business. There's an awful lot of money spent, there's an awful lot of soft money out there, a lot of things people don't see, and I'd like for everyone to understand that, and I will not support any more taxes or fines or fees that are unnecessary such as this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Artest. Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the last nine years, I've had the opportunity to sit on a lot of ADHOC committee meetings, but I honestly have to say, none were as maybe drawn out or as hot and heavy as we were talking about the shopping carts situation. If I may through the chair, I would just like to get some information for all of us here tonight from Mr. McWell, from the unit, as to what they actually have to go through in picking up the carts and their method of what they have to do. And I'll have a follow-up.
Mr. McWell? Our union representative tonight? Our union representative tonight? That's Mr. Mr. Swobodan.
Mr. Goddard, if you would just run us through, for everybody's opportunity to hear, what you actually have to do when you come out and find these carts, how you have to get them picked up and returned, or whatever your method is.
Well, what we normally do when we go out to find the shopping carts, as we were made today, we, once we find the carts, we call down to the Public Works Department, you get ahold of Dave Cook or one gentleman at Public Works that send out various trucks. And they usually send us out a pickup truck or a dump truck, that's a driver and a truck, and then we load the carts and the truck, and we take them down to Public Works Department and put them away. Now, we have no other way of getting anybody to pay for it. We say it's a, we have signs up in the grocery stores, by the way, they were verified. There are signs up saying do not remove the carts from the premises. Apparently, I don't seem to work, but there's some people that are able to stay off of these carts. Now, it's my understanding that these carts are in the neighborhood of a hundred fifty to two-hundred dollars each. If they're that much money for one cart, we think a high school kid could stand up in a parking lot and say, hey, don't take this cart out here for five dollars. No. So my theory is, it's a destruction of it. You go down the street on Osborne Street, or you go down to Rowan Street, or you go down to Osborne Street, or even up on Griffin Avenue, and you see these carts, and you move aside while. Now they're out there is because most people just push their carts there, and we're not looking at the people that pick them up the bags. They, you know, they act like most people, because they think, people either said, hey, the fact of the matter is that the people who just take their stuff home, one lady had three shopping carts in her backyard, three, in the backyard. We went to a church on Carter, she had three shopping carts with her. So, I mean, what do we do? Do we make the people bring them back? They're not going to listen to us and bring them back. One lady did. And we can't, and we're taking them. We can't, because we have no order, it's the people that's selling them. So how can we enforce something we don't have? So that's the matter is, and we spend probably, maybe, I'd say probably fifty dollars alone just in personnel, a truck, and a new truck being out there, and then loading your carts up. In fact, if somebody could get her, I mean, not somebody who paid, but somebody who picked up a cart and put it back, it's not really a problem. But it's a problem, and it's also the disgrace to neighbors when you see these carts all over the place. We're trying to keep it clean, and currently, people just goes, oh, they put these carts up there. It's not in every neighborhood, but they are on Tommy L. Avenue, too. We've got some there. So, can't you reach out some...
In your everyday working, there seems to be just one area of the city, obviously, where you're having most of your problems with the carts being taken from the stores?
Primarily in one area, but your carts are marked, we know where they come from, because it's right on the handle.
Can you, have you talked to the owners of these stores at all?
Oh, several times.
And what's been their response?
Their response is they send out a truck once a week to pick up the carts.
Stores?
Sure does. They send out one, a box truck, once a week, and we have seen the truck. It comes out once a week, but meantime, how many carts can be up, and the way they're picked up? They wind up in the still river, the kids take them, they throw them in Park Avenue, on Rowan Street, they're over the bank in the back of Rowan Street, pull them out of the river.
So the stores have made some kind of attempt to pick up the carts?
Yes, we have.
Okay, one more follow-up, if I may, to an attorney, please. Attorney, put the Corporation Counsel, if you will. In your opinion, passage of this legislation as it reads now, when it increases fines and so on, is that going to help the city, or as my colleague, Councilman Arcani stated, are we doing more harm by putting more fines on the establishments?
The ordinance that you have is, and this gets back to something I wanted to address to Councilman Taylor, too, his remarks before about the other ordinance matter. Some ordinances, most ordinances are intended to impose a general message, if you will, to the public, to the violators. This is one of those, the shopping cart ordinance. So let's answer the question this way, then. By implementing or adopting an ordinance or sending a message out to the parties who would be violating the ordinance, as an entire message, as opposed to having, let's say, signs on two, three streets, as was discussed before, two ways to handle a problem. So this one would address the problem in the sense that merchants would be put on notice that they have to institute measures, take steps to prevent the proliferation of shopping carts out of their parking lots, to take it from parking lots. Okay, so that's one element of what this ordinance does. The second element of this ordinance is by pure virtue of the fine, fifty-dollar fine, that is a second and more direct means to discourage a merchant from allowing those carts out. So I hope that answers the question. It does two things. So it would have some effect. No one knows what effect it would have. It depends on the price, as Larry said, the price of the carts and all the rest of that. So you wouldn't really know. What it tries to do is a broad prevention and then a targeted fine.
Thank you. Mr. Cheeves, and then Mr. Perkins.
Thank you. Through the chair to the unit. When you go out on a daily basis and you see these carts, and you call Public Works, why don't you just call a store, instead of calling Public Works to say, we have eighty of your carts here, come and pick them up, give them some leeway? Why don't you not call a store? I mean, if there's eight of them, I mean, it'll be worth their while to come out and get them.
Well, yes, we've been to the stores and told them about the shopping carts being down there, paying, they've come out and said, well, we'll send somebody down, maybe days before they send them down. We're not going to just send somebody right out to pick them up. That's not happening yet.
It also gives the possibility that the attorneys hit them out often in the same store. So now you have to make multiple calls, either identify the carts and then make multiple calls to multiple stores to get some of them out.
You know, I agree with some of the comments that the committee made to seat me with Councilman Arcanti, I don't think we should be fining a merchant for someone's getting their properties. Now, I believe that if you've got to give them some admirable recourse for them to get their carts back before we charge them immensely a fee for what we call a store's charge. But I think if we had these things in Public Works, and we give them twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours to pick up these carts, and they fail to do so, then I think we should charge them. If we had it there for a certain period of time, and we gave them the opportunity to get their carts, and I also agree that we do need the discourages to keep happening. But I think we have to play the other role as well, at least give them the opportunity to get their carts. And I know this has been a big issue over time. And just like the parking issue we had before, I think we really need to recommit this back to an ADHOC, so we can really debate this a little more. They're still not really debating this on the die if we exceed them. I think a lot of us have a lot of comments that we can, we suggest, make this a better ordinance, and give more, I mean, I think I can make a motion to have that forty-eight-hour requirement put in, but I think we should at least discuss it in ADHOC, to see if we can make this ordinance work. But the way it's written, I don't think, I don't see it working. I see it more determine merchants than actually trying to make this better work. Go ahead, Sue.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor, a quick information, if we pick up these carts and we bring them to Public Works, and we notify the particular store involved that we have these carts at Public Works, and he fails to pick them up within a certain or reasonable amount of time, then I think a fifty-dollar fine is justifiable at that point, from the labor and the taxpayers' money that was spent to pick up the cart and bring it there.
I agree with that.
I mean, our time is as valuable as that store owner's.
Right, because you just said you gave him a reasonable amount of time to pick them up.
But the fine should stay in place to pick the cart up if he doesn't pick it up within a reasonable amount of time.
I agree with that. But then, that can't be, that's not even part of ordinance. You just put that in the ordinance.
Mr. Perkins, and then Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did hear some, some points that my fellow councilmen brought up at the other end of the day. You know, we are nickel and diming our businesses, and I wasn't aware that Walmart, or Wal-Mart, Walgreens, had that particular electronic system. I have seen one down in Bridgeport, they work great, and it seems to me like a lot of these other merchants would be trying to implement some similar type of system if they're going to be losing the two-hundred-dollar carts. Like the unit officer did mention, that is a quality of life issue, and there's nothing worse, at least to me, than seeing shopping carts up and down Main Street and on other side streets, because I just, I just don't like that look. And I, you know, I would be interested in continuing to hash this out a little bit further, so maybe, maybe we need to look at it a little further. Just a follow-up question, if I may. How many of those carts actually don't make it back? How many do you all destroy, if any?
To my knowledge, these carts are stored down at Public Works for a random period of time, maybe they might be there sixty days, and then they get crushed.
Sixty days?
They crush it.
And then they crush them after that probably. So, I mean, ultimately, what's going to happen is if the people don't start picking their carts up, they're not going to have any left, because they're all going to be crushed. So maybe this would be a better strategy than ADHOC. So if someone makes a motion, I'd be willing to support it, if that's...
Thank you, Mr. President. Detective, Corporation Counsel mentioned regarding violator, the violator is not the store, the violator is the person who takes that cart. So unless you're going to make an ordinance, if someone's pushing a cart down the street, that we're going to hit them with some kind of a violation of the city ordinance regarding all, having that, let's face it, it's larceny. I don't see how, what you said there, a Corporation Counsel correlates with the violator. The violator is the person who takes the cart. I mean, is the service provided? I mean, obviously, if they let the carts out twenty-four hours a day, or when the store wasn't open, well, then there's probably some probability on part of the store. If they pick those carts in, they send two of those carts in, the store is closed, I don't see other violator.
The ordinance, or Councilman Arcanti, the ordinance, the way it is now pre- amended, as soon as an amendment to it, has two violators right now. One is that the person removing the shopping carts is a violator, as well as the merchant, if he doesn't post from on the property, that taking it off his property is a violation. So you have two violators. Under the proposed ordinance, you have a third violator, which is the merchant, for allowing the carts to be removed. So you're correct in that the violator now is not the merchant for removing the carts, but is the person removing the carts right now.
Yes.
Under the proposed ordinance, you have the merchant allowing the carts to be removed, the merchant not posting it, and the person taking the cart. Okay? So here's...
Correct. Yes, affirmative, but let's face it, there's no affirmative defense for anybody taking a cart. There's no affirmative defense for someone leaving the premises with that cart. And that's the violator. And the true victim in this is that store, absolutely.
If by some chance, as Counselman Cheeves alluded to, if by some chance the council feels that a fine is a lack of comfort, certainly, what the ordinance provides presently is a two-dollar per week charge for storage, up to a maximum of fifty dollars. Certainly, if the council wishes, they can rename the fine to a storage fee, re-figure the clause right now to allow for a fifty-dollar fine after, whether forty-eight hours or whatever it is after notice. That's another option you have. You could call to find something different, so it doesn't have the sense of partials. Maybe that's what folks want to like.
Mr. Kerrigan, move to the house.
Yeah, first of all, it's not a victim, as long as there's a solution, there is a solution, it's a all-in-one solution. Now, maybe we could make an ordinance that forces all the supermarkets to do what Walgreens does, put the system in all the carts. Then we don't have to worry about it anymore, and then they're not getting fined anymore. But I'll say what now is, if they're not even committing, if we play hardball one month, put this right into effect, play hardball one month, you will not have, I'll guarantee you, you will not have a shopping cart problem in the City of Danbury, because then the store owners realize that we're doing them a favor, because it costs two-hundred dollars to replace those carts. Because the manager of Walgreens told me, the reason they did it, it saved them, they were losing all the carts, and this was the way to do it, to save money. I mean, they didn't do it because they spent money, they did it to save money.
Through the chair to Mr. Law, please. I don't know if I missed, the, how often are you sending guys out to collect these? Is it on a weekly basis, a monthly basis, per call? How often is it paid, do you think?
Actually, we make this trip on a daily basis, we drive the streets every day, because it's...
So it's a regular route for you, then, to do?
Pretty much a regular route, because we have other problems besides shopping carts on the streets.
Right, but so they're out there, not just for shopping carts, but for other, because you said something about fifty dollars, is that per hour? That we assume, you know, what was the fifty hours you said about a man in the truck?
No, I was reading, it was hypothetical.
No, right, but...
A truck, you're sending a dump truck out, and you're probably talking to a man, saying five dollars per hour, whatever, plus this truck, plus myself, and I'm bored, you know, it's going out.
Also, is it summertime, is it more, at wintertime, or is it seasonal?
It's pretty much seasonal, really. At wintertime, you don't see a lot of them out there, but now spring is broken, and we just sell eight today.
And is it one store or one another?
Well, if you can't analyze the neighborhood where you are, you're in the neighborhood where a big store is, that's where the shopping carts are going to be. You're not going to see them from Stop &amp; Shop, I don't know if you heard what he said, and you're very seldom seeing them down in history, but the Walgreens on Lower Main Street, we have them down in that areas. They have someone finding their carts, or damaging them, or behind the building, because it is wintertime.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is to Mr. Miguel. Earlier, you said that we cannot find the people that are removing the carts. We just reiterate that, what people can we not find? When they take the carts off, if they have a sign in their building that says that they're not supposed to remove the carts, and you see them with the carts, why can't you find them?
Because we don't have the facilities to find them.
Whatever.
This is just...
Okay, the police department. Why don't you call the police department and have them take care of it? I mean, that's usually how it goes.
I suppose you could do that, but I think...
But what, you said that there are some people that you don't mind taking the carts?
Well, I'm saying, some people you wouldn't mind taking, if I had to.
Why?
They'll maybe walk down the street for a whole thing of hours.
So we're going to determine who can do it and who can't do it?
Well, yeah, I know, I know what you're saying, you're right.
We can't do that.
You have to do that for yourself.
I also feel that, and this is my opinion, I also don't feel that the City of Danbury has the right to tell businesses what they need to do to run their own business. And I would, my next question, thank you very much, is to Chief Baker. How are you tonight?
I'm thinking...
Thank you. Chief Baker, let me ask you a question. When somebody has something stolen from their property, they call the police, and the police come out and make a report. If we were to put this into effect, and the store owners put up a sign, and instead of saying, follow the ordinance, they say, if our carts are taken off the property, we will prosecute to the fullest extent of the law, we're not telling them what to put in the sign, correct? But what we're saying is, you call them to post a sign, and one will alleviate the problem. Instead of putting it on the business owners, who, you know, are paying taxes in this community and offering a service, if we have, and I do agree with having the stores put the signs up, and pretty much scaring the people so they don't take the carts off the property, but once the carts are off the property, who's to say that the store owners, at the end of the night, lock their doors, go out and take a count of the carts, and say there's a hundred carts? That's who they started off with. And every night, just put a call into the police department, because they have it clearly posted, that it's illegal to take it off their property? That's almost as good as, I mean, it's a lot less expensive than having the store owners install these devices onto their machines. A lot of these stores may not be able to afford to do that in today's day and age. But they call you up at the end of the night, and they say, I started off with a hundred carts, I have eighty now, twenty are missing. I have 80 now, 20 are missing." Well, your police officers write a report, now they're stolen. Okay, now they're considered stolen, okay? And then we find out that the carts are sitting in the Public Works Department, because they didn't pick them up throughout the city. And now, aren't they holding on to stolen merchandise? I mean, how does that work? I know it sounds crazy, but I think the whole thing is crazy.
Um, we probably wouldn't charge them for holding, you know, possessing stolen property, so that the owner of the store couldn't establish, you know, very specifically the property taken, when it was taken, how it got there.
But it is stolen property, though.
Sure.
You filled out the report. Okay, that's, that's all I'm interested in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arkanji.
Thank you. Through the chair to Corporation Counsel. Last, I'm looking at a fee schedule here, penalty for violation, this is subsection B. Any person failure to comply with the provision of subsection C, one hereof shall be subject to a fine of $25. Then it says, any person or person failure to comply with the provision of subsection C, two hereof shall be subject to a fine of $50. So, I go back up to C1 and 2. C1 seems to be fairly straightforward. Basically, it says, if you steal a shopping cart, you're, you know, going to go to jail. But it also says underneath here, it shall be an affirmative defense to prosecution under this subsection, that the business establishment involved has failed to comply with the provisions of subsection B hereof, which says to me that maybe we're figuring the business owner for $25. Then 2 is removal of, from premises prohibited. It shall further be unlawful for any proprietor or owner of establishment making shopping carts or related devices available to customers to allow removal of such carts. So, it looks like they're on the boat for two fines. I'm looking at 50 and 25, we're up to 75 bucks, okay. Now, I'm looking at a retrievable fee of $10, so we're up to $85. It's a storage fee of $2 a week, so let's figure, we can be there for three weeks, but we're at $6.91, and pretty soon, we're getting close to our $100 fee that we were talking about earlier this evening with the cars, for shopping carts. This was a contentious, as we all know, I wasn't on it, but I was at it, and on it, you know, by proxy as ex officio. And I was watching good people with good intentions unable to agree on a proper response. As we know, and I'll stipulate, that shopping carts clogging up Storm Springs in particular, in places like Blindwood and Still River, intersections is not a good and healthy thing in the city, you know. And we also know that shopping cart owners, store owners, should probably be a little bit more proactive. I mean, not like they don't have a lot to do already, but they should probably be a little bit more proactive, if not to themselves, to their shareholders. I mean, if these shopping carts are $200 apiece, and they're in the wind, it would seem to me that shareholders might say at the end of the year, you know, guys, it adds up, we've got $15 in storage, using 200 carts a year, and you know, that's like, you know, a dental floss to the CEOs. But I mean, it could be quite a big one. So, there were a couple of attempts to, to work around this, where we could satisfy Sean, the unit, we satisfied the police, we satisfied the store owners, and we would kind of, you know, satisfy the community in the sense that at the end of this process, we would have less shopping cart flying around, you know. One of them was a simple retrievable fee. You know, we see the carts, and we don't want to leave them there any more than we want to leave anything else there. And we take them, and we pile up, and we call the store, and we say, "Come get your carts, and we want your cart back." It's $15, which is probably, I don't know, 90% less than the cost for a rental. They don't come and get their carts after three or four months, we auction them. The issue I have is not with picking up the carts, it's not with being properly compensated for retrieval. I've had two cars sold in my life, and it has always cost me money to get my car back. Somebody winds up with my car, it's not me. I mean, in an illegal fashion. I don't, I don't mean a kid that stole it, put it garage or something like that, and I have to pay a retrievable fee. Normally, it's handled by the insurance, but you know, there's, there's some point, you know, $75 for a tow or something like that. There is a precedent in certain circumstances where, when a city or state gets involved with retrieval of stolen property, there can be a fee for that. This is not a fee, this is a fine. I don't have too much of a problem with the fee. I mean, the, the community wants to get together and clean up a river, or they want to mow your lawn, or paint your house or something like that, or fix your sidewalk, if you can't do it, well, you know, it may cost you a couple of bucks. And it may, we may all look at the same thing for shopping. We, after notification to the people that own these stores, because we don't want a sandbag, and we say, "Look, we're going to be starting this new thing in a couple of months, and if your carts wander away, we're going to, we're going to get them like we normally do, but you're going to be responsible and pick them up, and you're going to have to pay a couple of bucks for each cart, and then they'll come out themselves." So, that was my view. I, I don't like the precedent of fining people for being a victim. Now, I, I know we can be here all night long arguing specifically about the level of culpability between the property owner and the thief. You know what? People have big TVs in their living room, and they have picture windows, and, is that an invitation to steal a TV set? I mean, you know, you can make that case. Lawyers can make that case. I don't happen, I don't happen to agree with that. I think you ought to be able to control yourself if you see some property in somebody's house or in somebody's car, you should be able to keep your hands off. I don't think that if you can't, it's the call for the property owner. However, if it leads to, like car accidents can lead to costs incurred for cleaning up intersections and just wriggling, you know, clay on roads and things like that, that can incur costs in fire departments, and, and some of these emergency services want to be recompensed for some of these things. Oh, well, even some of them. You can make a case, and I will more often than not agree with you. I think this is that case. I think that we could rewrite this, so that we don't set a precedent of fining people for being victims, even if they are partially, to some extent, at some percentage, at fault. I would be very much in favor of sending this back to ADAC, where we could hammer it back out again at another, I'm sure contentious, but I think we're kind of on the same page where we realize that it's a problem, we can fix it, and, and maybe we can kind of do the same thing without necessarily punitive defining the, the property owner for the loss of their property. And I, I'm not going to speak for Mr. Arkanji, but I mean, that might even satisfy him. I don't, I mean, but certainly, removing, removing the fine from, from this ordinance would, would satisfy him. But as it is, I, I, I believe that. I'm not voting to keep shopping carts in Blindwood, represent Blindwood, and Flood's Muff already, we gotta get them out of there. But there may be a different way of doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arkanji. Mr. Wisconsin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was on the ADAC committee, and it was a very interesting meeting. We brought this back to the committee as a whole to discuss it, which we have done here tonight, and I totally agree with most of the statements. But again, we could be here for another couple hours like we were that night. So, I'm going to make a motion, send this back to the ADAC committee for further study, and perhaps change some of the items that are in here.
Motion made by Mr. Wisconsin, seconded by Mr. Cheeves. Any discussion on the motion to refer this back to ADAC? See, now, if I have your minds all in your favor, see if I can say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody change? And then, this will go back to, first back to ADAC, to 2016. If you can, if you can go, if you can, if you can, if you can.